You're watching BCTV. We're all about Branford. You're watching BCTV, Branford Government Television, our service of Branford Community Television. This program is brought to you in part through the support of the town of Branford.
You can view this on BCTV and Facebook Live. I ask everybody to mute themselves. And if you would like to speak, use the raise your hand function. If you're calling, hit star nine to raise your hand and star six to unmute yourself. Those who are joining us through Zoom. Just give me one second. Okay. So item one, to approve the Board of Selectmen minutes from October 21st, 2020, October 7th, 2020, and September 2nd, 2020. And our package, do I have the motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
Been moved by Selectman Higgins, seconded by Selectman Dunbar. Any edits, changes, corrections? Okay, hearing not all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
We are going to move over to Tony Perito. Jump right to item three and four to get those out of the way before we go into executive session. So I ask Gary Zalinski Supervisor, Department of Public Works, to come on up. And item three, to consider and if appropriate, approve request from Gary Zalinski Supervisor, Department of Public Works to waive the bid for the purchase of straight salt and award the contract to Morton Salt in the amount of $50 per ton. Gary, thanks.
Yeah, select to waive bid for purchase of salt for the year 2021 at the cost of $50 per ton delivered. Price of the Crog last year was, which is this year too, is $62.50 per ton. And that's not trucking, trucking not included. We've been dealing with Morton Salt for quite a few years now. And they've been a great vendor to us. Their service is wonderful. And you know, they're about three to four hour window away. If we ever needed emergency delivery, they get it right to us. So.
So did you figure that $50, $50 is delivered?
Correct.
Uh, any questions?
Huge savings, yes. There's, there's a big saving as far as it's, it's less than the state bid and also trucking too. We either, we, either we would send trucks to pick it up at East Haven, which is going to jam us up, or we'd pay for trucking. So it's a win either way.
So the current state bid price which they're so far holding is $12.50 a ton. Any further discussion? It's been moved by Selectman Dunbar.
Second.
Seconded by Selectman Higgins. All right, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Pass unanimously. Item four, to consider and if appropriate, approve request from Gary Zalinski Supervisor, Department of Public Works to waive the bid for the purchase of a grapple rake bucket and 416 quick connect hook and award the contract to W.I. Clark in the amount of $18,350. Gary, you want a brief overview of this?
This grapple rake bucket would not only benefit DPW as far as clearing debris from roads, from storms, which you all know. We've been having quite a few storms. Also, this, this could be used at the transfer station to managing their brush pile. So it's kind of a multi-use tool. This will mount on the, our new 324 John Deere loader. This will be at our disposal at the ready as far as if we have a storm or something like we've had in the past, we can get that right out there and get it working. And it'll save us time, money in the long run instead of hiring out vendors or as many vendors as we have in the past. This is a good size grapple bucket. It's three yards. It can handle quite a bit of material pretty quickly. So we get it off the roads a lot quicker. Yeah. Yeah, more end diesel was a little bit more.
Yeah.
I think that's where we bought the machine.
Yep.
And services, we get parts through them for when we service the machines.
All right, any further questions?
This is just an attachment to, to equipment you already have. There's no mechanical parts here. There's no mechanical parts here. It's just an attachment.
Just hydraulics.
Just the hydraulics.
It's a bucket with actually jaws that will actually clamp down on the brush.
So we don't need to warranty or anything. This is just a piece that attaches.
It's, um, no.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Any further discussion, question? Been moved by Selectman Dunbar, seconded by Selectman Higgins. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Pass unanimously. Thanks, Gary. Going back to item two, a motion to go into executive session to discuss pending tax appeals.
Well. Second.
Okay, make the motion, seconded by Selectman Higgins. And for the record, we'll invite Tony Perito in. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you. We'll be back, folks. We gotta clear the. Okay. Uh, well, can I get a motion to go back into regular session? Move.
Second.
Second, moved by Selectman Dunbar, seconded by Selectwoman Higgins. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
We're back into the executive session. For the record, no votes were taken while in the executive session. Okay, um, can I get a motion to approve the proposed settlements for 16 Business Park, 19 Business Park Drive, 25 through 29 Business Park Drive?
Motion to. Second.
Moved by Selectman Dunbar, seconded by Selectman Higgins. Any discussion, hearing not all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Pass unanimously. Can I get a motion to approve the proposed tax settlement for 41 Sunset Beach Road, 65 Sunset Beach Road, 68 Sunset Beach Road, 69 Sunset Beach Road, 24 Summer Island Road, 28 Summer Island Road, 4th, 9th Avenue, 6th Indian Point Road, 6 Tyler Avenue, 6 Prospect Hill Road, 7680 Kent Road.
Motion to approve.
Moved by Selectman Higgins, seconded by Dunbar. Discussion by the board. Hearing not all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Pass unanimously.
First, Selectman Cosgrove, I do have a question on that.
Yes.
One listed as one Halsted.
That was withdrawn.
Withdrawn, thank you.
As well as on that first page, there were some listed that were withdrawn.
Excellent, thank you.
Okay, moving along. Can I get a motion to approve the proposed tax settlement for 68 Maple Street and 70 Indian Neck Road?
Second.
Moved by Selectman Dunbar, seconded by Selectwoman Higgins. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Pass unanimously. Thank you. Thanks, Tony Perito, for your work on this. Moving along. Item five, green news, to consider and if appropriate, approve request from Reefs Across America for the use of the town green on Saturday, September 18th, 2021, to hold the Branford Greater Open Mini Golf on the Green.
Second.
Moved by Selectman Dunbar, select, seconded by Selectwoman Higgins. Discussion, hearing not all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
To consider and if appropriate, approve request from the Friends of the James Blackstone Memorial Library for the use of the town green for September 23rd, 2021 to Sunday, September 26th, 2021. Moved by Selectwoman Higgins, seconded by Selectman Dunbar. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Pass unanimously. Appointments, Clean Energy Committee, Eunice Mahler and Joseph Gordon. Moved by Selectwoman Higgins, seconded by Selectman Dunbar.
Get the comment, please.
Yes.
Um, couple things on this. Uh, as you know, I have, and I'm not alone having a bit of a difficulty with this Clean Energy Committee. And I'm all in favor of Mr. Gordon being appointed because straight shooter, he's, you know, real good guy. I think most people know him in the community. I don't know, he's just very intelligent, worked on putting the man on the moon. So he really knows this stuff in terms of science. I think he'll bring a lot to the committee. As far as the other applicant, Mrs. Mahler, sure she's a lovely person. I'm sure she's very knowledgeable. But I think the request we put in before the Board of Selectmen was to balance this committee. Wasn't to put another, you know, far left. I'm not saying she's far left, but I read a little bit about her. She's certainly, you know, of the same ilk or the same opinion as the committee that is there now. You know, completely, you know, environmental oriented. I would assume, you know, a believer in man-made global warming, a proponent of green energy is, you know, basically at the expense of fossil fuels and nuclear energy. And I don't think that's serving the town. And I went to the Board of Education the other night. I'm sorry, the education committee meeting. Because, and when I went to the Clean Energy Committee meeting, you know, now they're advocating putting, you know, their agenda or their, their perspectives within the school. Well, no, that's wrong. I mean, first of all, a lot of people see their agenda as nothing more than political propaganda. You know, it's based on certain science, yes. But there's a whole different perspective out there that this town, quite frankly, the world has to consider. And I think it's irresponsible at best that you just put certain people on the committee where you have nine people thinking the same way and nobody really thinking the other way. Now, I want to say one thing, and this is extremely important. Our daughter is environmental and sustainability, environmental sciences sustainability graduate of one of the finest environmental schools in the country, probably the world. And she and I go back and forth sometimes about this and about that. And I told her what's going on with this energy committee. And she said to me, well, you know that anytime you just have one perspective is never a good thing. And the kid has a point. And I think that we should, you know, follow that in terms of at least our own perspectives on this and balance this committee out. I mean, just so you think I was called disruptive and unproductive and not contributing by the first selectman at the last meeting because he wouldn't put me on the committee. Well, you know me better than that, Jamie. You know me a lot better than that. The only time I get disruptive is when somebody challenges my right to speak or I think, you know, my overall civil rights. But I look, I bought this book, False Promise of Green Energy, Global Climate Change. You know, a guide to the, to the debate, Green Illusions, False Alarm. You know, how climate change panic costs us trillions and apocalypse never. You know, why environmental alarmism hurts us all. Why? Because I want the other perspective. I'm a big fan of green energy. Good for green energy. If this committee can show that that's what we should do, have green energy, you know, let's knock ourselves out. But I'm a bigger fan, and I'll close with this. I'm a much bigger fan of having, you know, robust, even discussion to come up with the right consensus as to what should be done. So I would ask you to reconsider. Again, no disrespect to Mrs. Mahler. Sure, she's great. But if you're going to put her on and keep packing this committee with pro man-made global warming, pro green energy, pro, well, then you got to start really balancing it. Or you're going to get one side and one side only. That's all I'm going to say. Do what you want, but I think it's a fair point.
Okay, thank you for your comment. Um, I think I have Michael Pericon.
Yes, hey, could you hear me?
Yes, go ahead.
Okay, I guess, so how does someone get on this committee?
So as I stated many times, if anybody's interested, this is an ad hoc committee of the Board of Selectmen. If somebody is interested in serving and participating in this, they should express an interest and write a letter to, you can send it to my office or to one of the other selectmen.
Okay, sure, I wrote, because just in my job, I finance a lot of homes with solar energy. And I think I could provide a lot of useful information and direct feedback from people who have solar currently. And, you know, the pros and cons. So what I'll do is I'll send, you know, a letter and hopefully I could get on it and add some input to everybody.
That would be great. We've always opened it up to anyone's interest. Now, I think what's important for, uh, to just go, and I know this has been stated several times before, but just as I just said again, this is an ad hoc committee of the Board of Selectmen. So when it comes to the committee, and this is a committee of, yeah, looking into clean energy. And that is their mission. That is what they've been trying to promote, different initiatives. I understand the comment regarding balance. And I've always opened it up to others that want to contribute to it. But in terms of this, I guess, concern that the town will take action without considering alternatives or the cost impact, you know, whatever it may be, is there's always an approval process for whether it's the Board of Ed is going to do something at the school, the town is going to do a project. There is the Board of Finance, RTM, planning and zoning. So to be clear, that this committee, which, you know, I, you know, commend them for the work that they've been and the time that they put into it. But the reality is that what everybody needs to recognize that there is a process that they need to go with before we implement any measures. And I've stated many times, and even in this meeting, many times that when we're looking at projects or implementing different measures or taking initiatives, we always look at it through a lens of not only the environmental benefit, but we look at the operational benefit and we look at the financial benefit to the town. So I just think that's important for everyone. Sir, did you, Revan, did you, wait, one of them? If you sit there, if you can just, can you hit that button and make sure that microphone's on? Did it go on? Is it green? Green, go ahead. Just identify yourself for the record.
My name is Andrew Riddick and I'm working on a Clean Energy Committee. And I would like to speak in favor of both Mr. Gordon and Mrs. Mahler being incorporated into the committee. I would like, first of all, to commend Shirley McCarthy and First Selectman Cosgrove for being open to a diversity of opinions and backgrounds. I think one thing that was very attractive about Mr. Gordon is that he has, he's a businessman, a local businessman. He's an engineer and he's a conservative. And we're looking for diversity of opinions for, to serve on the committee. Eunice Mahler is a local resident. I've known her for some 30 years. She's a very intelligent, very personable and very energetic person who, as I know her, is not looking to grind a particular axe, but rather to bring value to the, to the residents through this Clean Energy Committee program. And I'd like to also emphasize something that, that Mr. Cosgrove pointed out. And that is that our programs that we're advocating are not pushing a particular point of view. We don't talk about climate change. Everybody's entitled to their own opinion. What we're looking to do is to educate residents as to the energy efficiency and energy generation options that are available from a technological point of view. And also to bring qualified contractors to their attention. So we see it as really an informational function rather than an advocacy function. So if there are any questions about the committee, I'd be happy to answer them to the best of my ability. But I fully support both of these nominations. And I thank.
You know, if anybody's interested in your meetings, they are public meetings of the Clean Energy Committee, you can find that information. That information on the town website. As well as, um, on the town website regarding the energy plan that I know was being discussed, that there's a link where you can provide comments and information directly to the committee through that, through that means. So you can go to the town website and find that there. So with that, I just, I do, I see Mike Pericon. Is your hand up for another comment? Or is that left open from before?
I'm sorry, that's leftover from before. I'm going to lower the hand right now.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks.
All right, so hearing none. I'll take it for, uh, we have a motion, right? We had a motion, we had a second. Any discussion, hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay. Yeah, thank you, thanks. Oh, I'm sorry, I'm sorry. Did I skip over one?
Oh, definitely.
Human Services Board, Ronald Washington, to fill a vacancy left by Maria Storm, term due expire December 31st, 2023. That's been moved by Selectman Dunbar.
Second.
Seconded by Selectwoman Higgins. Any comments? Do you have a hand up from Mr. Cook? Go ahead, Wayne, you can unmute yourself. Wayne, you can unmute yourself.
I'm trying to. Can you hear me?
Yes, relax.
No, I'm not going to relax because you blocked me from talking at the last one too. I mean, you sit up there with those buttons and all you do is mute me. That's not fair. I wanted to speak to that last item. I'm going to speak there right now if it's okay with you.
Yeah, you didn't have your hand up.
I did have my hand up. Listen, don't mute me. There's no reason to mute people. That's not fair and it's not democracy.
Do you have a comment?
Yeah, I do, I have a couple of them. But I'm going to get back to the last item because what you said about that Clean Energy Committee and what Mr. Revan said about that Clean Energy Committee is 1,000% wrong. And go to the meetings and see what they do. They're clearly advocacy and about your nonsense about the process. But by the time the process takes effect, all their propaganda is out there. So people only believe one thing. That's why you have to educate the entire public now, the entire community now. So I mean, let's be real about this. I mean, I'm not, I'm not naive. I know how.
What? Do you have a comment regarding?
I just made a comment.
The Human Services Board on the agenda item we're on now, please.
I just made a comment. And the fact of the matter is, I would have made it the last time if you didn't mute me.
Oh, today.
It's so funny. The other thing I wanted to do, I sent Trista a video, five minute video that I would like to have.
We're going to take this to a vote. If you have no issues with the Human Services Board appointment?
No, but again, you know.
Thank you. All right, all in favor, say aye.
I'm in.
Aye. Pass unanimously. That was all that fun. All right, item seven, correspondence. Um, we do not have correspondence. However, I believe Mr. Cook has sent a video asking it to be aired during this. It is in a Dropbox, I believe, for those, right? And it has been forwarded to the other selectmen.
Why can't you do it now?
Uh.
Excited, why can't, why can't that be my comment for correspondence?
Okay, well, correspondence is what's sent in. So now we're going to go to other business.
I sent it in, I sent it in.
Yeah, and we're not going to do, and we're not sharing the screen. So if we could go.
You're not going to share the screen?
No.
Why aren't you going to share the screen?
Because this is the Board of Selectmen's meeting and we're running a meeting here. If there's something that's relevant that we would like to.
It is relevant, it's absolutely relevant. It's very much relevant. It's relevant to the whole clean energy issue. And I wanted the town to see five minutes worth of another perspective. What's wrong with showing that?
Okay, and I just said it's available through the Dropbox.
I want, I want, it's part of my correspondence now. It's my correspondence now.
Okay.
I don't want it to, what are you afraid of? What are you afraid of? That people don't know the truth about you and this Clean Energy Committee and the way you run?
Okay, we're going to go to item. Eight, any other business?
Yes, I have other business, please.
Okay.
I'd like to screen share. It's not a video. I'd like to screen share a presentation I made that's extremely relevant to this community.
You have three minutes.
No, I don't have three minutes.
Okay.
What are you afraid of?
Now's your time is good. Okay, so please start your comments. If you have any other business, you have three minutes to present. If you did, if there's something you would like the board to see, you're welcome to send it, you can.
I'd like to see it.
You have three minutes. If there's something that the board feels is relevant to the board's business and one of the selectmen would like to continue the discussion, I'm sure the other selectmen would.
Okay, fine, fine.
And that, so go.
I'm going to spend three minutes talking about how you're running this meeting. And you're entirely unfair. And I want to know what you're afraid of. You know, you got plenty to be afraid of because there's about 10 issues out there that shows that all you do is run away from problems. All you do is cover up dishonesty and corruption. So no wonder you don't want screen sharing. I had a presentation just now of all that went on in Costco. Everything that went on in Costco, which you ran on. And you know what? You know, I'm going to get it out there somehow with the RTM or the committee because they're not afraid of the truth. And you are afraid of the truth. And I'd like to know where that investigation is that you promised four years ago that looked into, suppose you looked into the corruption and the dishonesty and all, and all the fraud in Costco. Where's that first selectmen? And why don't you at least show it to the, the third and the second and the third selectmen? What, they can't see this investigation that exonerated, you know, not just Diana Ross and Shapiro, but the whole town? Where is it? but the whole town? Where is it? You've been talking about it for four years. Where is it? Where is it? And now you won't let me put a presentation on about Costco where I will spell it out in absolute facts, absolute facts went on that whole thing. And I challenged anybody, anybody to come forward and say that my facts are wrong. But you don't want that out there either. Why? Because once again, you're running and hiding, like you always do. You run and hide from Costco, you run and hide from Parkside Village, you run and hide from Atlantic Wharf, you run and hide from Jay Medwin, you run and hide from Tabor Property, which you're giving away. All you do is run away. You just run away. And you're running away right now. Right now, because you don't want to see my presentation, you give me some nonsense, some nonsense about you don't screen share. Well, you know, shame on you, Jamie. Shame on you. What are you afraid of? The truth? You afraid of the truth? Because I tell you, I'm still coming. I'm coming every single meeting, every single RTM meeting, every single committee meeting. And I got a lot of people that are coming themselves because we're tired of your nonsense. We're tired of your nonsense. My three minutes up yet?
No, you got another minute. Go ahead.
Yeah, I'm going to go on for another minute and tell everybody exactly what you're about. And again, you know, I got this Costco presentation. I'm going to get it out there on my own. And it shows exactly what went on, that Diana Ross committed fraud. Absolutely. Shapiro was part of it. And you know, when the whole thing was absolutely exposed, what did you do? Oh, we're having an investigation. Yeah, some investigation. We've never seen this memorandum from this labor attorney. Never seen it. Where is it? Where is it? I just, I mean, why don't you even show? And I want to hear the second selectman and the first, I mean, and the third selectman, after I finish this minute, I'd like to hear them ask for this investigation. Why can't you present that investigation to them? Why? Why? I just would like to know. I mean, they're, they're, they were elected fair and square. They deserve to see. I don't, I don't want to see it. Just show them. Just show them that this investigation exists. Show them that it exists. All I have to say. And again, shame on you. Shame on you for, once again, running away from the truth.
And that question has been answered.
No, it has not been answered. It absolutely has not been answered. Run away. Just run away.
Thank you. Three minutes is up. I think selectman Dunbar has a comment.
Information will go out one way or the other. So everybody in the town already knows that. We get it on our executive session or however. But I think it would clear up some of this. So this isn't every meeting to say, you know, it exists or whatever, whatever we're allowed to say. But I know he's working on it. Can we put a little pressure on him to maybe please bring his up to speed?
I had, as I stated before, and I agree, there's a way, I will follow up again. There's a way to get, the, the issue that the attorney who is representing the two individuals in the lawsuit that Mr. Cook has against Diana Ross and Danny Shapiro, they have, they are named. So they are actually, and so the attorney is representing them.
There's nothing to do. This has nothing to do, nothing to do with the lawsuit.
Please, I'm explaining to, yes, it, how is it?
No, it does not. Nothing to do with the lawsuit.
Oh, anyway, the, as I said, the individual, one of the individuals who is named in the lawsuit, who this, the insurance carriers represent, the attorney for the insurance carrier for the town is representing, this has to do, and he stated he didn't want to meet with us as a board because we are representing the town. And he said with that, and so he wanted to see if that would be then privileged information. So once he determines a way to present to you guys individually or however, quite honestly, as I stated before, for me, if I was looking for me personally, I, you know, I don't see, I don't think there's anything in there that's harmful to, probably not to me, but to the town. And I think, you know, I understand. I wish you were able to. But the facts are that Mr. Cook has a pending lawsuit against one of the individuals named in that this investigation. That's what I, all right, any other comments? All right, I will give you one more comment there. I know. I see you got the hand raised. You got it. Hang on. I clicked that. Have you unmute yourself?
Okay, okay. Speaking directly to what you just said. I'm not going to get into the other stuff. It's directly to you, what you just said. You promised this investigation to the community four years ago, four years ago, when Costco was still sniffing around here. So four years later, and probably then some, at 2000, yeah, about four years. So that has nothing to do with our lawsuit. This attorney should have nothing to say about it. And let me just throw this at you, too. Do you think for a moment that we're not going to get that, whatever, if it even exists, that we're not, we're not going to get that during discovery? What do you think? Apparently, you don't even understand the legal process. Of course, we're going to get that. I'll see it one day, if it even exists. So I'm just saying, in the meantime, why don't you give it to the two other selectmen? Has nothing whatsoever to do with that lawsuit. Nothing. Absolutely nothing. And I'll see you next meeting for three minutes. And I hope you reconsider. And I hope the other selectmen let me screen share because it's important. It's important that the town sees what happened here. Extremely important. Because you would like nothing better, and I'll finish with this last sentence, you would like nothing better than to keep this lawsuit, to keep the facts of Costco and the fraud and the corruption and all that. You would like nothing better than to keep that in a black hole where nobody knows about. But it's not going to happen. Not going to happen.
Okay, thank you.
I have a motion to adjourn.
Yeah, it's been moved adjourned. I just do one quick clarification.
Yes.
Because if it has nothing to do with the lawsuit, then why would it be, why would he get it through discovery of the lawsuit he has? The motion is adjourned, non-debatable. All in favor? Aye, aye. Pass unanimously. Thank you. Have a good night, everybody.
This program was brought to you in part through the support of the Town of Branford. Watch town meetings and other videos on demand at branfordtv.org.